Oh, yeah. It'll take a second. Okay.
Good morning, everyone. I'd like to welcome you to the Cook County Board of Commissioners' regular meeting today, Tuesday, April 11th, and if we'd stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
So this morning, if we look at our agenda, I just want to see if there are any adjustments or changes to today's agenda. Any adjustments or changes?
Madam Chair, I'd like to make a motion to approve the agenda.
Thank you, Commissioner Mills. Is there support? Thank you, Commissioner Starley. We have a motion and support. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. At this point, we have our public comment period. It's an opportunity for citizens to appear before the county board, and the public is welcome to address the county board on any matter of county concern. Are there any members of the public that wish to speak this morning? Have we received any written comments, either commissioners or administrators?
I have not.
All right. We will move forward then with our consent agenda items.
Madam Chair, I would like to move the consent agenda with a clarification for the public.
Certainly.
Item 3D, approved promotion of Brenda Port, actually is not a promotion as much as it is a transfer between departments. I know there's confusion among the public sometimes about hiring practices here at the county, and I just want to make sure that we understand. I talked to Leah yesterday. This is a position that was hired recently at the Law Enforcement Center, and this person has the skills to move over to this open position. So it isn't, it isn't increasing wages because of the job description, but it is more of a transfer between departments, and it is not that we have our family, I mean, our job descriptions in the family categories yet that they're moving up. So I just wanted to clarify that for everybody.
I appreciate that clarification. Thank you.
Support.
We have a motion and support. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries unanimously. We'll move on to item four, Veterans Services, and Karen Christensen is with us this morning. Welcome, Karen.
Good morning, commissioners.
Morning.
Well, I am here today to get the approval of the board here for a grant I'm applying for. The thing with this grant, it is through Minnesota Department of Veterans Affairs. It's a competitive grant, and with that, we have to submit all our paperwork, and it's not guaranteed. They had this opened at the beginning of February, and out of 87 counties that can apply for this, according to what was given, information given to us, nobody applied for it. So they opened it up again for a second round, and three weeks' worth of time, you only had to get this in, and it's due this Friday, the 14th. I am looking at trying to get the grant to help veterans with dental care. Of all the things that are offered to the veterans, dental care is one of those things that is very difficult to get. So I know from my travels to, all the way from Grand Portage and all the way to Tofti, those that I've talked to, I would say 50% of those veterans have always asked me, is there any type of dental care available? And I unfortunately have to tell them no. So I know we have the Oral Health Task Force here in town, and I thought if I tapped them, maybe they can help me out and get this in. Otherwise, honestly, I would not have been able to do it on my own with such a short amount of time. So I got ahold of Paul Nelson, and he said he would love to help out with this. You know, a short time period, but he got ahold of Jetty St. John. She did all of, basically all of the work and some of the research. She got in touch with Dr. Alyssa Hedstrom. She took care of a lot of that stuff. So I have, as of yesterday, I sent to James the final paperwork and everything, the application for this grant, and I am looking for the approval of it today. I'm asking for $60,000. It will not be anything guaranteed. I could get nothing, and I could get the 60 or anything in between, but it is for, I'm looking at a two-year period to spend the money. So I'm really excited, and I'm really hoping that this, you know, does go through. It is definitely needed whether we're here in Grand Marais or the St. Paul or Rochester. It's the same for everybody as far as, you know, dental health concerns. So, any questions?
I just want to thank you, Karen, for coming up with this idea. It's a fabulous way to support and help our veterans in need, and you've done your homework, working with the Oral Health Task Force and speaking with Dr. Hedstrom. And personally, I'm just really excited about the opportunity to get the grant in. Other comments or questions? Commissioner White.
Could you tell the listening public and me, how many veterans do we have in Cook County?
Currently, the guesstimate, there is actually no known number, is anywhere between 300 to 428. There are two different, you know, reporting. governs the, the state has one, which is on the lower side in the 300s, and then the Minnesota Department of Veterans Affairs has us at 400, and I believe 28. At this point, I honestly don't know, but part of some of the outreach I've been doing, and also with some of our other departments, they've been asking on questionnaires if you're a veteran. That way, they can kind of have an idea of how many they're working with, so they can get, so then we have an idea too, and we might be working with the same veterans, which has been happening a lot. And I'm hoping to get a better handle on the count of our veterans. I will say that a minimum of 50% of our veterans are Vietnam-era.
And what is that number?
I-
Not Vietnam vets, but how many does your department work with, or are you aware?
That I'm aware of?
Yes.
I have not done a count, but currently, since I started in April, I have, in one way or another, talked to, just question-wise, or working on a claim with them. I would say it's about 100 right now, but there are more.
Good information. Thank you. Commissioner Mills.
Thank you, Madam Chair, and thank you, Karen, too, for, for this. It was awesome. Yesterday, I was in Duluth, one of our community health board meetings, and we accepted grant money for, from Blue Class Blue Shield to, to provide community dental services. And Cook County has such a strong, the Oral Health Task Force is such a strong organization that our needs were not as great as the rest of the region. We're very fortunate, and this is another example of how our community is really bolstering people in need and veterans and just trying to get that good work done. So I really appreciate both your work and your willingness to partner and, and the work done there. That's just, it's really, really impressive. Thank you.
No, it's my pleasure to do this.
Other comments or questions? Commissioner Hawkins.
Thank you. So I'm glad you have the filled-out form in front of you now, because, so I'm wondering, on the application, the blank application that was in our board packet, there were indirect, direct, and operational costs that were supposed to be put out. So can you tell us the percentages of those?
Certainly. You're looking, you're asking about Form 5.
It's right here.
Administration, indirect, and operation and direct.
Yep.
Okay. For administrative, that is $4,000, which will be 6% of the budget.
6%.
Operations, 1,000, which will be 2% of the budget, and then the direct veteran services of $55,000, which is 92%.
And then, on page six, it, you're supposed to give a statement of future sustainability.
Mm-hmm.
And what did you put there?
Okay. With preventative and restorative care in oral health education, veterans will only, veterans will only require annual checkups in the future. The Sawtooth Mountain Clinic provides some funding for dental expenses, and if the veterans are 65 years and above, the OHTF also provides some support. When people learn the importance of taking care of their teeth, including regular visits to the dentist, their tooth decay will decline, and only annual checkups will be needed.
Okay. Thank you. I wanted clarification that this was not coming out of levy dollars.
No, no, it is not there. No.
And then, another statement in the, was that the reporting requirements for this grant are more robust-
Yes.
-than other ones. Are you doing the reporting, or is Oral Health Task?
I, I will be taking care of all of that.
That's you.
Yes, yes.
All right. I close my questions. Thank you.
Mm-hmm.
And Madam Chair, I did just forward the completed grant application for your review.
Thank you.
Commissioner Starley.
Thank you. Thank you, Karen, for doing this. In being optimistic when you receive an amount of money, how will you get the word out for the veterans to know about this?
We will be doing on social medias, the newspaper, that kind of thing. The big thing is word of mouth. That's, that's a huge, huge part of my job and a huge reason why I've been having more veterans come in to see me, is by that word of mouth. We'll also be printing up some brochures and things like that to hand out. I will be sending those veterans I know of. I will mail, be mailing out information also. So at this point, we're just in the beginning steps. So I'm sure we'll have more, I will have other ways, other ideas. If anybody has any ideas, of course, let me know. I'm always open to hear what people have to say.
Commissioner Mills.
Madam Chair, I'd like to make a motion to approve the, the grant application.
Thank you so much, Commissioner Mills. Is there support?
Support.
Thank you, Commissioner Starley. We have a motion and support. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Karen, we have an appointment-
Yes, we do.
-for a signature.
Great. All right. Thank you so much. I do appreciate the time that you've given to this, and have a good day.
You, too, Karen. Thank you.
Thank you so much. We appreciate it. All right, at this time, item five, Highway Department, and our Highway Engineer, Robbie Hess. Good morning, Robbie.
Good morning. So what this is, and I know we've talked a lot about this project and this particular grant, this is kind of the last piece of paperwork, I think, associated with this grant, because it comes from the state, and the state likes paperwork, as you're all aware of. Sorry if anyone's listening. But no, this is, this is basically just the grant agreement and then a resolution of support accepting the grant to, for our Local Road Improvement Program grant that we applied for, is $835,000 that we were awarded through that competitive process, that will go towards our Fifth Avenue West project. So this is just kind of the last step in this process. I guess, does anyone have any questions about it?
I'm just excited about it.
Me, too.
Long time coming, that's for sure. Other questions or comments by commissioners?
Madam Chair, I'd like to make a motion to approve the resolution agreement to formally accept the grant.
Thank you so much, Commissioner Mills. Is there support? Thank you, Commissioner Hawkins. We have a motion and support. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. We appreciate your work. All right. Management Information Services. So it looks like we have Jay Decou coming forward to talk to us a little bit about towers. Couple more towers.
Couple more tower things. Yes, thank you, Madam Chair and commissioners. So before you, this week, I have two contracts, one for Minnesota DNR, VHF repeater equipment located on the Bogus Lake Tower, and the other is for the Mid Trail Tower. So if you look through the different, there's a slight difference between the two of these. The Bogus Lake Tower is a, a full lease that has a $300 per year utility charge on it because the county owns and operates the entirety of the equipment there, as far as the tower, the building, and the land. So all the electricity goes through our meter, and so the, the practice that we've been putting in place for those towers is that tenants pay us a little bit of money so that we can offset some of the electricity expense of running their equipment. So that's the Bogus Lake one, so five-year renewable. So then, basically, every five years, it's worth $1,500. Not a lot of money. It's kind of a token to, to give our, our partners, our public safety partners and other public entity partners, a bit of a break on space on the towers, but also to make sure they still have a little bit of skin in the game. The other one for the Mid Trail Tower is a little bit of a different creature because the county owns the land and the tower, but doesn't own the building that the equipment is in. And when we were going through the leases for this, for this particular site, we saw in the fine print of the Mid Trail Agreement that we have with MinDOT, that MinDOT said that they were going to pay for the utilities, and we'd been paying for them for the entirety of that agreement thus far. So when I pointed that out, they said, oh, well, we'll start paying that then, which changed the nature of this agreement with, with the DNR. So the DNR doesn't pay us anything, then this one's got no value whatsoever, but it still covers the liability of their stuff on our tower, on our land. And then their agreement with MinDOT covers their expense, their utility expense with MinDOT, and then also the liability of them being in that building with, with MinDOT. So, so it took a little bit of, a little bit while to kind of like move the jigsaw pieces around so that we figured out exactly what we needed for the legal coverages that we, that we were going for, but we got there. And, and the DNR, I'll give, I'll give it to them, they're very thorough about their reading of these, of these leases, but we finally got to an agreeable place with these. So I would love it if you would approve these leases.
Thank you for the explanation, first of all. That's-
Yeah. It, there was a bit of back and forth on this one, so I figured it was probably good to explain.
Absolutely. Commissioner Mills.
Thank you, Madam Chair, and thank you, Jay. And I just want to point out, when it comes to thoroughness, it takes one to know one, so.
I do like policy.
All right. Any further questions or comments for Jay? If not, I'd entertain a motion.
So move, Madam Chair.
Thank you so much, Commissioner Mills. Is there support? Thank you, Commissioner White. We have a motion and support. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Thank you for your work.
Thank you very much.
All right. Land Services, Mr. Nelson. I'm tempted to take a break, but we won't.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Good morning, commissioners.
Good morning.
All right. Couple brief items before you today here. One is in continuation, we're on the third year of this One Watershed, One Plan grant. We have pretty much accomplished all of our tasks in our first two years. As I've come to report to you before, got authorization to continue on with, with some reallocation of funds from Lake County, who is regrettably unable to achieve all of their selected goals on there. And, and we went ahead and you approved the continuation of our Lake Shore Septic Compliance Inspection Program for riparian lots on Lake Superior, coming from a point in Cascade Beach Road up to the western limits of the city of Grand Marais. And we put out for, request for proposals on those, and we did receive two proposals back. And the, the low bid, basically, is, is one from an inspector who has accomplished the exact same work for us in the different other segments of our project over the couple, two decades that we've been doing this. And that's Jeff Crosby at $600 per system. And as I indicated in the report, that this, the funds that we'll be receiving from Lake County will completely cover the task. There's not any funds that the county will be expending, and we've also already had met the match criteria for the grant. We did that in the first couple of years as well. So I'd just like your approval to go ahead and retain Mr. Crosby to complete those inspections, and they'll be completed this, over the course of this season.
Well, it's certainly nice to know we are moving forward, and even though it's sad that we had to take funds from another county, we're very appreciative that we could do that. Any comments or questions for Mr. Nelson?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Thank you. Tim, I got just a little confused going through things because of the, the cost share for pumping out. That's probably none of our business, really. Like, is that a factor in any, anything with our decision? Like, I just see the 600, and I saw the 675, and that's probably all I need to know. I was just wondering about that, if the other bid include, or, you know?
Having the other bid actually being higher anyway, regardless, we didn't inquire, but it did not come with a specified separation of that activity. So we presumed that we had put the bid out as just the inspections, not with the pumping. And so that's kind of a bonus thrown in there. We normally don't do that, and that's actually a, a bonus thrown in because the money's available, and that's about as many inspections as we can hope to be able to accomplish. So it's, it's good that that is thrown in there because we don't have a whole lot of other things to be able to throw that, that money out at this particular time. So it's, it's actually a benefit for us to, to have done that, and the cost was lower, having included that anyway, so.
Yeah, benefits for, for, for our residents, too.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, property owners. Great, thank you.
Other questions? If not, I'd entertain a motion.
Madam Chair, I make a motion to approve the, or award the One Watershed, One Plan Grant Septic System Inspection Proposal to Jeff Crosby for a total of $600 per system.
Thank you so much, Commissioner Starley. Is there support?
Support.
Thank you, Commissioner White. We have a motion and support. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries unanimously.
Okay, thank you. And the next item, which actually has long been awaited for since, and this has been some time for us, since we've had a full complement of both the Planning Commission and Board of Adjustment members. We did receive this final application in from Mr. Jeff Lee, who's actually had, had done some work for us in the past in the development of our stormwater ordinance. He had performed some work in scoping for the alternative urban area-wide review, is the environmental review for the Caribou Lake Area Watershed, which the Subordinate Service District of which we still continue in on with the water monitor, water quality monitoring. And so he has a lot of good history with the, with the county, and he's a lot of good history in working with levels of government and Planning Commission. And this is just for the Planning Commission. Now the Board of Adjustment is full at this time, and so this appointment, which I'm recommending, will bring us to a full seven members of the Planning Commission, and hopefully that'll keep us going for a good while. We, we actually had run the first few meetings of the year. We were unable to attain of, of even a quorum. So April meeting is, is now this first time we'll be able to achieve a quorum for the Planning Commission, which gives us a good sigh of relief in that respect.
Probably wouldn't be a busy meeting either, huh?
Well, it'll be a busy and interesting meeting, and I believe, looking at the applications that we received and the members that are already on the board, I think we have achieved a really good balance and diversity of perspectives and thoughts and areas around the county. So I think we're in a pretty good position here now.
I'm excited with the diversity and the fact that it's the first time in two and a half, almost two and a half years, that has been a full board. So, very exciting, very exciting. Commissioner White.
Just information. How long does a person serve on this board, and are they compensated monetarily?
Commissioner White, Madam Chair, the, they are compensated. It's the regular per diem. It's a, so they get the per diem, and they get the mileage for going out and doing site visits. We really encourage each of the members to go out to the properties and do the site visits, so they can get a real feel of the applications and what is actually being requested on there. They are three-year terms, and they're staggered terms. The Planning Commission has no term limits to them, but what generally happens is we have seven members on the Planning Commission, five members on the Board of Adjustment. We have three, a three-term term limit on the Board of Adjustment. So generally, people will, will serve a couple of years on the Planning Commission, but by that time, someone will have run into a term limit on the Board of Adjustment. They'll get off, and that person who's already on the Planning Commission then will fill that spot, and then they'll do, they'll start a term limit, which is three, three-year terms, which is nine years.
And what is the per diem?
The per diem, the per diem's $30.
Other questions or comments? Commissioner Starley.
Thank you. Well, I am very happy to now be represented in the West End. I've been beating the bushes for like, I don't know what, two years, and I don't know Mr. Lee, but when I do meet him, I'm going to thank him for stepping up, because that's really important to have the districts represented.
Other questions or comments? Commissioner Mills.
Somewhat tangential, but Commissioner White helped me realize it, that, that could very well be a part of the problem of finding members for the Planning Commission, is having the $30 per diem.
Oh, wait a minute.
Oh.
No, no.
Oh.
Sorry.
Well, I, I guess I'm, I guess I'm spitballing here, but it would, if I, if I asked a member of the public to come forward and give their time for that, and give them 30 bucks, they'd say, well, I'd make 50 bucks if I did something else, so.
Mr. Nelson.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Commissioner Mills, I, I would actually tend to agree with, with you. Each of the, the members, the newest members that have applied and that had applied, have fully understood that they were getting $30, and they felt as though they were going to be fulfilling their civic duties and, and helping out the community and such like that. It is important to note that, as you may have noticed over the last two and a half to three years in particular, there's a lot of contention that comes in a lavra emotion that goes through these particular meetings, and, and we, we had hoped and thought maybe an increase in the per diem might help be able to, because people have had that thought, well, I'm getting only 30 bucks for this. Why am I putting up with all of this? People are calling us names and everything like that. And so it is a very stressful committee to be on, and they certainly do, you know, you see the feedback over social media and other venues and such, and so they, they do take a lot of criticisms and such, and we would hope a lot of praise, too, but that's, that's one of the areas in which we'd kind of thought, I had kind of jokingly indicated to Mr. Lee that we were probably going to hope to get his per diem from 32 to 30, or $30 to 32.50, you know, for the, for the next raise.
Because of inflation.
Yeah, of course. But, you know, what, what, that's another discussion. You know, he, he understood that it is for the $30, and he's, he's fine with that at this point, so.
Commissioner Mills.
Thank you, Madam Chair, and I do apologize. That is tangential to this discussion. I just, it came to mind when I, when we were, you know, the numerical value was brought up. And I do believe I know Jeff Lee, and I think he has been involved in the community a fair amount. I think Ski Patrol.
Yes.
Yes, yeah. And, and so, yeah, I've had the opportunity to meet him in the past, and have known, I've known him, have been acquainted for years, I'd say. So really happy that he, he's applied, and, and he'll be great. I didn't realize his background is what it is, so that's pretty cool. So I'd like to make that motion there, Madam Chair.
All right. We have a motion. Is there support?
Support.
Thank you, Commissioner Starley. We have a motion and support. Any further discussion? Questions? If not, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. You have a full Planning Commission.
Round of applause.
All right.
Thank you.
Thank you. Auditor Powers.
Thank you, Madam Chair. This is a request for a loan from the revolving loan fund, from the Cook County Real Estate Fund, for $175,000. Fund for $175,000 for renovation of the Birch Park Building downtown Grand Marais. Interest on this loan to be at market rates for a term of 20 years and all of this on condition of county attorney approval of satisfactory completion of borrower documents, including personal guarantees, promissory note, and borrower agreements. Revolving Loan Fund Committee met with CCRF, the Cook County Real Estate Fund, on March 23rd to discuss the loan request. CCRF is a private fund that provides equity from local individuals, businesses, and nonprofits. Their stated goal is to fund profits exclusively in Cook County with an emphasis on restoration of properties along with new developments to support business growth and housing. Their loan request is for the renovation of the Birch Park Building in downtown Grand Marais to create rental space for multiple business opportunities. Because the loan exceeds 75,000, the county will charge market interest rates as per state statute and county guidelines. And what this means in practice for us is that we survey the three banking institutions in Grand Marais, giving them the background of this loan and ask them what they would charge for a loan of this nature and then we'll average the three, or whatever responses we get. So that's been our practice for a market rate. I guess I'll just leave it to questions.
Commissioner Hawkins, you sit on the revolving loan committee. Anything you want to add from the discussion that occurred?
Well, I will leave the exact details to Brady to go over if anybody has specific questions. I will just say the revolving loan fund committee met, it took a couple of meetings to go over these documents. It, it was a more complicated loan than I have had the experience of sitting. So there were lots of questions about how the revolving, I mean, the Cook County Real Estate Fund is organized and complicated in the fact that there's different divisions under that and who are we actually making the loan to and who benefits from this. So it did take some time, but I believe all my questions got answered in a satisfactorily way that I felt confident with the recommendation of the others on the board that we approved this law. But if you want to talk about the structure of the loan exactly, you'll have to go to Brady for exactly the exact detail.
Okay. Thank you. Commissioner White, you also had a.
Did you mention that this was for housing renovations also?
They may look at things like that. I'm not saying housing renovations. They just said in their general statement, they're supporting housing, business renovations, business development, and housing. But we haven't seen anything on housing at this point.
And that's where this got complicated. This loan is for this Birch Park project. They do have other funds available, but they're hoping to use that for other projects. And that's why it became confusing for me of what are we funding here? But that's where the borrower agreements and all that stuff details what we are giving this loan for and who's responsible for the loan.
So, and the reason I asked was because this was another one of these ongoing random encounters with the community, in the community and someone said, we have a, we have a low interest account for people to borrow to upgrade or install septic systems, right? We have a, if people need to fix their septic systems, they can come to the county and the county will, and you pay back the county. Would there be something, this was the question, that there could be a fund created that for people that, and this had to do with housing property? If people now, because the kids are gone and they would like to take and make part of their three-bedroom house, take one in per se and make it into a, a long-term rental, would there be, could there be, is there value in creating a fund to help people do that? And I, so they could, and then with the understanding that this addition or change to their house would be housing, long-term housing for X number of years, rental property? This is not something to be answered right now. It's just, it was an idea that was thrown out there. Is there, would this not be something that, that maybe the regulation banking institutions should be covering? But then on the other hand, if you have people who are on the margins, what they do have, they have home ownership to their property, if they could, two things, help perhaps it would pay rent from that long-term housing would help to pay back the loan and then it would also help alleviate some of the stress we're having in this county with lack of housing. So I don't know who should perhaps discuss this more fully.
H.R.
Hey, Chair.
That's been discussed.
That's a great idea.
It has been discussed. Okay, he's not here today. Well, that's, we meet at 1:00 today.
1:30, yeah.
It's a great idea.
And the revolving loan fund committee is, you know, we're going to dig into our guidelines and it's just a question I'm, I'm going to ask for that is how far we can go into housing? I've had different answers. I looked through my old notes from different directors that we talked with at DED and have varying answers on housing. So we have kind of limited, let's say, requests in that area and we've limited our involvement if you looked at the guidelines. So we're going to look at it a little more too. I'm not saying that that's where, but we'll, we'll look at it also to see where we can go on housing and part of our overall. Mindy Fredrickson is here too, if, if she has anything to add. Sorry. She was at the meeting also. She's on the revolving loan fund committee. But.
Commissioner Mills?
Madam Chair, thank you. So assuming we approve this, what would that put the revolving loan fund at-ish?
I don't have the, the most recent quarterly, but we were at 680 or something at the last one, as I recall, so.
Okay.
We're in good shape, yeah.
Yeah.
If we get a lot of quarter million dollar requests, we'll be doing some serious evaluation.
All right. Well, good conversation.
Yeah, and, and Molly is, you know, as Stacy said, it's a, it's a complicated, it's probably the most complicated, let's say, partnership arrangement, these partnerships, and it involves multiple entities, but there's seven local people who will be providing loan guarantees and it's, it's unusual, but we feel it's stronger than the guarantees we've seen on others where there's so many individuals that it's, you'll see it later when Molly works on this in detail, but I think it's a strong security for the county.
Thank you so much for that. Any other discussion or questions? Not, I'd entertain a motion.
I'll make the motion to approve the revolving loan fund to the Cook County Real Estate Investment Fund as presented in this.
Thank you, Commissioner Hawkins. Is there support? Thank you, Commissioner White. We have motion and support. Any further discussion? Any other questions for Auditor Powers? If not, all in favor? Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. Administrator Yorki?
All right. Thank you, Madam Chair, and good morning, Commissioners. The first item under my section of the agenda is a request that we received from the owners of the Gunflint Lodge, Mindy and John Fredrickson, who are here this morning, to extinguish the county's interest in what are essentially a couple of driveways that lead from County Road 50 down to the shore of Gunflint Lake on the lodge property. The, the roadways in question or the driveways, I'm going to call them driveways because that's functionally what they are. They're, they're listed as county, county right-of-way, but we have never maintained these driveways as county roads. In fact, I think we were surprised to, to learn that they're actually designated as public. And it may have been, these were platted back in 1925 and it may have been that at one point there was public access there for launching boats. I don't know. But today there is a, a public boat launch that is just a few hundred yards, or a hundred yards, 100 feet west of this location. And so there is really no, no need for public access there. We have never treated the, the roadways as public. We've not done any maintenance, not any plowing. And if you look in the, on the cover sheet under Minnesota statutes 163-11, there are five criteria under which counties can extinguish their interest in a public roadway and all five of the criteria apply in this situation. And so the, the request today is for the board to approve extinguishing the county's interest in these roadways. You've got a map that shows the, the areas in question. The two driveways form a triangle on which sat a structure known as Justine's Cabin, which burned last May. And the owners now want to rebuild and they do have a variance request into the Board of Adjustment and that's going to be considered at the meeting tomorrow evening. The, the variance request, the county's interest or lack of interest in, in these driveways factors into the variance request. So if the board elects to, to extinguish the county's interest in the driveways, that will, that will basically render moot part of the variance request because it won't, it won't be part of the setback requirement. So that's, that's why this is timely and again, we've, we've had extensive conversations internally about this. We've talked with the highway engineer, Robbie Haas. He has no interest in maintaining these driveways and so at this point it appears there's no reason why the, the county wouldn't want to extinguish its interest. One thing to note is that because the driveway terminates at the lake shore, we do have to notify the Minnesota Department of Natural Resources about our intent to extinguish the county's interest. MDNR does not have any sort of veto power over that decision. It's just a matter of informing them. So that, that is the request and I will just say, I'm not a land use attorney, so if you have questions about that venture into legal nuances, I won't be able to answer them, but from my perspective, this seems like an appropriate action for the county to take.
There has been a lot of discussion since January with the Highway Department, with the county attorney. It, it is, in my estimation, the right thing to do and we have not maintained plowed, put gravel, we've done nothing up there. And I'm sure all of us have been to that location, are personally familiar with it. And it's just something that was on the books a long time ago that never got taken off. So, questions? Commissioner Hawkins?
Thank you for the explanation. I appreciate that maybe you have been discussing this. My concern when I first saw this is two years ago, I made a mistake vacating an, or easement for a piece of property that I should not have voted for because we didn't do our research. I'm on the Highway Advisory Committee. I attend the Parks and Trails Committee and neither one of these advisory committees to us as a board even discussed this. First time I heard about it was when I looked at my packet Saturday morning. Totally understand the dilemma there, but it's like the process here. I'm, I don't know. I guess the last easement we did was wrong. We shouldn't have done it. It cut off a part of an ATV trail that's pretty important to our system. Now, I don't see that same issue here, except I wondered, oh, snowmobile clubs are, you know, has their, has there been a route through there? I don't know. So, but this is, I get the rationale for why this is, but it's like, we have committees that I think some of these issues should be brought to, to help gather information from the public that we ask to serve on these committees instead of having them call me later saying, how come you didn't tell me this? So that's my.
So I would just say from Parks and Trails, I don't see the connection with Parks and Trails. Certainly I could see that it might have been brought up for discussion at the Highway Department, but I did look at plat maps and I don't see any kind of snowmobile trails through that area, anything of that nature.
And I don't think so, I mean, I brought up the county map. I get that. It, but here we're going back to process. The last time we vacated an easement without going through the steps to make sure everybody's on board. And this is the thing, part, we have new people in new positions without the background information and yet we have people on these advisory committees that have the historical knowledge of why it was this way. It's fine that a group of people get into a room and say, yeah, no problem. And, oh, it's 20, from 1925, no problem. There may be reasons that some of the public would disagree with your assessment and it's just good to get that information ahead of time to them before I have to vote on it.
Madam Chair?
Yes, Minister.
Highway engineer Haas is here and I think he has some information that may be relevant to the Commissioner's question.
Aye.
Thank you.
Yes. Yeah, I agree. Most, most of the thing regarding process and, and, you know, the things, we have committees, we have the COW, we have the board and, you know, generally I think when things rise, you know, ultimately what we talk about at Highway Committee is, is up to me. And so this was one of those things that I didn't, I guess, feel was necessary to talk about. It seemed like such a cut and dry, very easy, I guess, thing where, you know, when we looked into it and didn't see any trails, didn't see any history in, in it being actually used for the public, to me it almost just seemed like a mistake back then that then gets carried forward. I see it a lot sometimes on surveys of stuff like this, just old things that either, you know, originally gets surveyed, you know, in this example is a public road, and then you can see it in future surveys disappear. So it almost corrects itself. And so this is one that just seemed to carry forward where, yeah, to, to the level of, of bringing it up for a discussion like that, I guess, I just didn't think it was necessary to talk about. So in the future though, if there are things like this that do come up, I'm happy to put them on there. I don't want to make it sound like we're trying to like ram anything through or like do something nefarious so I get a couple of free nights up at the lodge, but I'm just kidding. But that's all that was, was that. It seemed like a very cut and dry thing where all we had to do was, you know, we worked with Molly's office to develop kind of the resolution with it of, of vacating this because, you know, to, to the Administrator's point, they're just a couple of driveways. They've never been a county road. They never should be a county road. Initially, when this came up, I was baffled as to why this was even a conversation. They never, never have been. I don't ever want them to be. We have enough to do as it is. So I don't, if that helps context, yes.
Yes, and I agree with you. I am fine with giving up some roads and saying they shouldn't be county roads. I get that.
Yeah.
And my only concern is I made a wrong vote a couple of years ago.
Sure.
Because I was told, oh, it went through all the department heads and no department had had a problem with it. And while it's because they didn't know the context of it.
Sure.
Because just not, background knowledge.
Sure.
And so that's where I'm saying, anytime the county gives up some. And so that's where I'm saying, anytime the county gives up something for nothing, I just want to make sure we've informed the public that they've had an opportunity to say, oh, wait a minute, did you think about this?
Mm-hmm.
I really don't think it's going to happen in this case. But there, it's just good to bring these things up to the boards that are supposed to be advising this, and not just make them at the top-level decision.
And that's easy to do. We can do that in the future, for sure.
For these kind of decisions, I think is important. So then that brings me to my next question. So this land just goes on the tax rolls then for Gunflint Lodge? Is that how this works? Or what hap, how does this legally transfer?
Yep.
It is.
If it transfers to them, then the property gets...
So, without it, you're getting this land from the county for $0, but it is going on the tax rolls, and we couldn't do anything else with it, right?
Mm-hmm. It's a win-win, win-win.
Can we let Mindy here?
Yes, we certainly can. Thank you, Mindy.
Yeah, thank you for considering this. And I think, James, you did a good job of explaining it. I know Ann's been involved from the beginning. You know, Stacy, I certainly apologize, you know, we've been working with the county, you know, since January, trying to get this done, so don't know, you know, what got missed. But to the degree that I can answer your questions, I will. This land is not county land. This land is deeded, Gunflint Lodge land. We own the land. There is no deeded property of the county, there's no deeded easement, rather, of the county. It is a plat from 1925 that says, I think it says county interest, is that right?
Dedication.
Okay. Anyway, so it's land that there's some sort of unknown, undefined interest in the county, but it's, the property is owned by MJ Resort, our entity, or MJ Guns and Properties, our entity. So it's not giving up, it's already on the county tax rolls, you're already getting taxes for it.
All right.
You're not giving anything up except for whatever this interest is that we don't really know, and the responsibility to plow it, which has, which hasn't, and so I understand your concern. You know, when we found this, you know, we talked to Bruce Kerfoot about it. He said the county has never plowed it, he said it's never been maintained by the county in his entire lifetime. We don't really know why it's there. As far as snowmobile access, it doesn't link up to any trails. It, you know, if you look at, I don't know what you have in your packet, but, you know, essentially, it's two driveways that come down, so there's the county road, two driveways come down, then there's our lodge parking lot and the dock to the lake. So it really is, you know, our fishing guides use it to get their boats into the lake, we use it to, you know, to get docks in and out, and, you know, and we use it as a driveway. But it's not something that is, other than getting to the parking lot for our gas, it's not really something that's publicly traversed.
Thank you for that explanation. If you've gone down to the Gunflint canoe races, it's one of those driveways is the drive you walk down.
I snowmobiled there last year, so...
Okay.
And you still can. I mean, we're not, there's no intent to, like, cut off anybody's access or anything like that. It's just, it's really from our standpoint, just, you know, wanting to make, you know, kind of quiet title, right? Just make sure that our deeded access is clear, that it's, I'm sorry, our deeded property is clear that it's our deeded property.
Thank you for that clarification.
But we have no interest in saying that snowmobiles can't come up. Anybody who wants to come to the lodge and go to our restaurant certainly can.
Commissioner Mills.
Thank you, Madam Chair, and thank you, Ms. Frederickson. That helps me. I misunderstood the situation, and I really appreciate your clarification there.
And James, Ann, Robbie, have I described it as you guys see it as well? Okay, thank you.
Any further discussion or questions? Commissioner White.
Well, I like the fact, I mean, what Commissioner Hawkins had said, historic perspective, asking Bruce Kerfoot about the history of this road, roads that disappear, township roads. Our property, which the county so, in their great wisdom, said absolutely not, we're not taking that road back. And it's now a private driveway for many of us. Out in that neighborhood, speaking to one of the original people that lived out there, homesteaded out there, we used to have a school in our neighborhood, we used to have stores, and none of that's on a map these days, you know? So those roads had great value. Our neighbors said, you know, yeah, they used to go to the Hovland Town Hall, taking that road, which never used to exist. I mean, it was the only thing that existed. Now, 30 years ago, it was still, it was still open access, you could walk through it, but the woods have now taken over, and it's a tangled mess, so, you know. So getting historic perspective on different pieces of property is not something that can be replaced with just Google or digging or... We have people in this county that have stories to tell about how life was not so very long ago, and it's very valuable, so, thanks for asking, Mr. Kerfoot.
And just, interestingly, you know, Bruce said that they would plow up to where the cabin was, and he said, then the plow driver would sleep on Mother's floor and then finish and come back to town. So, but he said, the two driveways, he said, no, they never plowed, they just plowed up on the county road up to Mother's house and slept on her floor. So, that's one of those stories, right?
Which, to identify, or an example of why Cook County is not like other counties? This is our history that continues to be, you reach out and touch it, it's right here yet, I mean, so, yeah, great, somebody, somebody, I don't know who, Historical Society, School Projects, should be compiling all of these stories that people don't even recognize that they are stories of value, but they certainly are, so, okay.
Other questions or comments? Commissioner Mills.
Ah, the old document from 1925 is really interesting, and I'm no liar, but it's strange, what's up with the state of Florida and the county? Is that where all this took place down in the, back in the day or something? Or what's...
Use it if you ever need it, it's up here.
Yeah, County of Palm Beach.
Climate change.
Yeah, weird, okay. I'm sure I'd like to make a motion to, let's see, notify the Commissioner of Minnesota Department of Resources, Natural Resources, of the county's intent to extinguish its interest in the abandoned highway located, as stated in the packet here.
Thank you, Commissioner Mills. Is there support?
Support.
Thank you, Commissioner Starley. We have a motion and support. Any further discussion or questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries unanimously.
Thank you so much. We appreciate it.
Thank you.
Item B, the fiscal year 2024 budget calendar.
Woo! So, in your packet is a proposed calendar for the budget planning season. What we're asking for today is your approval of this calendar. And just for the public's benefit, going through it briefly, we start this process in April. We used to start it later, but stretched out the timeline a little bit to give departments more time to put their proposals together, and to provide more time at the front end to talk about what is being proposed, so that the Board has adequate opportunity to have its discussions. So we would be distributing preliminary budget materials to the departments this week, and then working with the departments through the end of May to get preliminary requests submitted, and then would spend the month of June kind of tweaking those and working through questions that might come up. The first presentations on the proposed budget would happen in July. So on July 18th, Public Health and Human Services Board would receive a report on the proposed budget for 2024. That would be followed on July 25th by a presentation of the proposed general fund budget, which would include the Sheriff's Office, so we would have the Sheriff here to talk about that. And then the Highway Department is proposed to give its presentation on its proposed budget at the August 8th regular business meeting of the Board. I know the question will come up, some of the external organizations, EDA, HRA, they are not on this calendar. We will need to schedule time for both of them, or one of them, depending on what happens in the next month or so. I know they're still working through whether a merger of those two organizations is appropriate, and there's still some outstanding questions. But we would want them to be able to share information about their proposed budgets as well. I know there's going to be a lot of interest about that, regardless of what the decision on the merger is. The proposed date to set the preliminary budget and levy would be September 12th. And at that time, we would also need to set the date and place of the Truth and Taxation Hearing, which is the annual hearing at which residents can come to receive information about the proposed budget, and also express any concerns that they may have about it. Truth and Taxation notices would go out around the second week of November. And then we would have, what we're proposing is to have the, again, the date of the TNT Hearing would need to be set. This past year, we had it, I believe, did we have it before or after the AMC Annual Meeting? The Annual Meeting of the Association of Minnesota Counties always occurs the first week of December. And so there's a question as to whether we would have the TNT Hearing before or after that, but it needs to occur sufficiently before the December 12th meeting, so that if there are concerns that come up there, we can make adjustments before the final budget would be presented for your approval on December 12th. So that is generally the calendar. I've sent this out to department heads, so everybody's in the loop, and that's it.
Any questions for Administrator Yurin? Commissioner Hawkins?
Yeah, I have a question for both the Administrator and the Auditor. April 17th, May 5th, you will be meeting to discuss department goals with, I mean, budget goals with departments. I'm wondering what your goals are.
Well, to try to manage requests, new requests, to keep the levy as low as possible. It's really just an information gathering phase to understand, like, what the needs are, and if there are any new requests that are being put forward, so that we can kind of get the big picture on what's being requested and manage that. Ultimately, budget goals are the purview of the Board, of course. I don't determine those, Brady doesn't determine those, those are, you know, if the Board wants to decide that there's some parameters within which we should be doing this work, then that conversation needs to occur at the front end.
And this, I mean, this has kind of been discussed at our budgeted advisory committee, and I don't see, can you explain how the budget advisory committee fits into this schedule of advising us as a Board?
Sure, sure. So that committee, for the benefit of the public, that committee meets monthly. And of course, as we go through this process, we will be engaging the advisory committee, because I will say, I have found it incredibly useful. We have really varied perspectives on that committee, and it has caused me to take a more critical look at some of the things that we do. We have really great discussions, and the other thing I really appreciate about that committee is that they, even when they don't agree, they always work really well together, and that's super important. So they will be, although it's not called out here, they will be updated monthly, and we'll be getting feedback from them to inform the process and provide feedback to the Board.
Thank you. One other thing here. One of the things that I personally would like to make sure that all departments think about when putting their budget together, is making sure there's a technology or equipment plan. I would like to see us go to even a three- or a five-year projected budget when we're considering our current budget, so that we don't have things come to us in a year saying, oh, and I'm thinking recycling center, because that was the one that came up mostly last year, I think, where we had to replace equipment when it failed. And I would just like to see that each department's budget had, I would like to see a list of, we think we need to replace this piece of equipment in X number of years, or whatever, or technology, I think, back over to the law enforcement, that was an issue a couple years ago. So, my personal opinion is making sure we tell our department heads, be thinking about not just this year, future needs, and are we budgeting correctly to plan ahead for those things?
Commissioner, I think that's a really great point. I agree with you completely. And I think we are doing that to a large extent. For example, in the Highway Department, in, you know, IT, we do have replacement schedules, and we are looking ahead to make sure that we're not in a situation where we have to, like, replace every computer in a given year.
Right. And that's, I would say, we are getting much, much better at that. I'm just encouraging that that continue, and we make sure it's across the Board.
There are definitely some areas where we can improve.
Yeah. And one other thing, if there are any new requests, when you're going through budgets of departments, of new requests, new services that are maybe suggested, or new opportunities they want to take advantage of, that we also get a list then, of if we do this, what might we not do anymore, instead of just keep adding? Not saying that it would be a good thing, or we're going to agree to cut that service, but what would be the recommendation? If you had to keep your budget just right here, and you want to do this, what would you cut, and how would that affect the taxpayers and the community?
Financially? Financially or operationally?
No, operationally.
Commissioner White.
And then, for clarification, with the, you know, it's like deferred maintenance is what you're talking about, which the Highway Department and the MIT Department, but I don't know what MIT means.
MIS.
MIS, okay. I tried, it just didn't work. It's the IT, it's computers and phones and technology. They seem to do, they have it together, they're doing this. So, and we know who works in these departments and what they do. Throughout this last week, the big question was, why is Public Health and Human Services? Because it is an area of our culture, our society, that understandably is a confidential piece for, but it's really important. People, people, taxpayers would like to know what really happens with all these, what are these different employees doing? Could someone explain what, well, just what does a social service person, what do they do? Just do that. Because that would help people understand why the different departments are requesting so much, I mean, a certain amount of money for personnel because of these are the required, or these are the services that we offer that are offered to the taxpayers of the county. And it's just an understanding, just in being transparent, as to this is what's happening in this department. They've figured it out now with the Highway Department, because of, you know, I think, that the public perception of the highway, I believe, has changed over the years positively, although... although I was muttering this morning about all those potholes all over the road trying to get to the highway, but it's the time of year. I would very much like that the entire county government, all the components of the government are better understood by the taxpayers as to what they do. No one is asking for confidential information, but I am personally thankfully clueless as to the entire social service network, having in eight decades never had any involvement with social services per se in my life, or anyone that has tangentially been in my life. So, I don't think I'm alone in that, but I do know there's a great need, and I firmly believe in community and government helping people that need help. So, it's not, it's not trying to reduce anything, it's just explain why we have this and what is done. What do they do? There are many of us that are uninformed, uneducated. This, I mean, I want to reach out, people reach out and ask me questions. I want to reach out to people that work here and say, "So, just what do you do? What does your day look like? What does your week look like?" And I understand there's a lot of paperwork somewhere, I've learned that along the way, you know? But, what else do you do? So, that's all. So, that would really help with budgeting for when you go to the taxpayers and say, "Oh, yeah, we're going to, this year, we're increasing the levy by 35% because commissioners are heading off to Florida as a conference."
Palm Beach to research this.
Yeah, we have to check that out. Something like that. So, we need information out there. It hasn't been, I mean, we're going to change it. We're changing, it's working, and...
Commissioner, if I could respond to that?
No. I, Madam Chair, if I may, I heartily agree. And so, one of my requests, and this is just one person, as we're going down the line here, is to budget for more resources for communications, because we absolutely need to communicate more and more effectively. But, I don't know if Commissioner White's familiar with the Community Connections pieces that we put out, but those could kind of go department by department and position by position and kind of do some explaining there. And there's leaps and bounds, we've been doing better with communication, but there's so much more to do, because there's so, it's such a large organization, there's so much to it, and it changes constantly, and yeah, we need to do more and better. I agree.
Madam Chair, if I could?
Administrator Yorkey?
Thank you. So, I don't disagree with you, Commissioner. I think we always need to be striving to do more to better communicate the work we do. I think that's our obligation, and the public deserves that. I will also say, having been through some public meetings recently, where we have almost begged people to show up at open house meetings to learn about our capital improvement plan. We've put information online. We have begged people to inform themselves about this. We can't make them, we can put the information out, but we can't make people read an article or go to the website. And that is a continual struggle for us, you know? And we devote a significant amount of time to putting information together. I really am committed to running this organization in a transparent way. I think that's a responsibility that we all have. But, I also know that you can do everything you can possibly think of to get information out, and there's still people who don't tune in. And I don't know what to do about that.
The onus is on us, though. The onus is on the government, because we tell the taxpayers, "You are going to pay us more money this year," or "You're going to pay us X amount of money." And communications will never be 100%, never. But, we do not, we, and I'm saying this as a person newly off the streets, out of the great masses of taxpayers, county government in this county is not trusted, because there has not been transparency through the years. And even if things, perceptions are still out there, and I believe you are absolutely right, this is changing. This is because of the due diligence of trying to get more information out, and of doing budgets and sharing the information. But, we can't say, "Yeah, we try, no one listens." Okay, so, we just keep trying. And I will tell you, and it's the burden that we, I, I'm not hired by anybody, but I have a whole bunch of people that I work for. I have many people out there, and the more they're given an opportunity to know what is happening, the more, they kind of like it, because then they, you know, I answer one thing, and now it's, they want to know more about this department. I don't think the east end of the county is unique. Well, we are unique, but the east end of the county is just a start, and I just think that we all have people sitting here, we are public servants to the public, and we're trying to build a trust. And communication to get it out there is on us, but that does not excuse taxpayers and community people from tuning us out. And if they choose to do that, I would love to have a conversation with them, to explain that they're wrong. You know, I mean, it goes both ways, and the county is really trying, but we can't stop and say, "Well, we just have to find another way," or more ways, or more donuts. I don't know what it is, but it will, it works. I mean, Commissioner Starley goes to the different township, or, yeah, township meetings. I mean, she talks to people all the time. You're driving around with information, packing it up, passing it out in alleys, and I don't know where you pass it out. You know, I mean, so, we're trying. I mean, I was, I was not literally a caustic, but someone the other day said, "What do you mean, the capital impro-"? What do you mean? What, we're going to put an addition on the, we're going to build a whole new law enforcement center? I just heard this. All right, well, no. So, when I tell people we are heading to Florida, let's see how long that takes anyway. Should be pretty good.
And in the interest of clarification, so where we are with the capital improvement plan, there is no plan yet that has been put forward for the board's approval, and so, we have concepts that are out for public feedback. But the actual plan, there's a lot of confusion around this, and I just want to clarify. The actual draft capital improvement plan, we expect to have available by the middle of next month. It will be available for public review, it will be available for the board's review, and there will be a period of probably three to four weeks before the board is asked to actually approve the final plan. So, I don't want anybody who's listening to this meeting to think, "Oh, my God, they already finalized this plan, and they're moving forward, and I don't know anything about it." There's still an opportunity to learn what is being proposed, to provide feedback on it, and to inform the finalization of the plan. Just had to say that.
Commissioner Mills?
Madam Chair, I'd like to make a motion to approve the calendar, to develop, gather public feedback on, and approve the fiscal year 2024 county budget and levy.
Thank you so much, Commissioner Mills. Is there support? Thank you, Commissioner Starley. We have a motion and support. Any further discussion? All in favor of the calendar? Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Minnesota Board of Aging.
All right. So, the Arrowhead Regional Development Commission and the Arrowhead Area Agency on Aging have requested the assistance of counties in providing feedback to the Minnesota Board on Aging regarding changes to the interstate, intrastate funding formula. This allocates federal funds to counties across the state. And the request is to amend the funding formula, which I included as an attachment in your package, your board package, to provide a higher weighting of, for rural counties. That's basically the main change that is being requested. And so, we've drafted, well, actually, we drafted a letter that is ready for the chair's signature, if there's agreement, to send it to the Board on Aging.
Commissioner Starley?
Thank you. Yes, I received this from Kristi Kane from ARDC. She works with senior planning, and they're quite worried about funding. They do support our care partners here in Cook County, and also a backup from Andy Hubley, the president of the ARDC, is really important. And so, they sent out a draft letter, and I was just about to put it together, and Commissioner Sullivan already beat me to it, so thank you on that. And, you know, there's extra reading here about other formulas that include grant portage and that whole thing. But, anyway, thank you for putting this in the packet, Administrator Yorkey. I think it's important that we not only consider our childcare in Cook County, but that we also help our seniors too.
Sure.
Absolutely. Commissioner Hawkins?
Yeah, I have a couple of questions. So, currently, formula is like 42% going to metro areas with 58% going to rural. Under the proposal, as suggested, the formula, it looks like it goes from 44%. So, we'd lose 2% basically, 2% more going to the metro. Under the ones in this letter, that we are proposing to, what percentage are we losing that or gaining, or? I didn't do the math of weighting those out, I just wondered if you knew and why you came up. I just thought currently 60-plus is 55, weighted at 55%. The suggested formula is going to 30, and we're saying go down to 20. And I'm just like, why? I wondered why, because we have a high percentage of 65-plus in Cook County. It just didn't make sense to me number-wise, and I'm wondering what the final percentage is. And then, there's also a sentence in the letter. I appreciate you writing the letter, so my question is, not criticism as much as clarification. It says, "There is no consistent public transportation in much of our county." I agree. "No broadband or sufficient speed." Well, I would disagree that there's no broadband.
True that.
I just want to make sure, if we are advocating for something, that we are making sure we're saying...
The text of the letter was provided by ARDC.
Provided.
And I was putting this together in the last week of not having an assistant. And so, it was a very quick cut and paste with inadequate time to review.
That's, okay, I just wanted to make sure, because I want to make sure that this, I get, other county, we're unique in Cook County, so we may be advocating for something that maybe in the long run is not in our best interest. I don't know.
And I didn't, Commissioner, I didn't have time to like cross-check the formulas. I took the information...
Yeah.
Yeah.
And I did not do that. One of the things I was really supportive of was greater funding for care partners, additional funding for Meals on Wheels, which is a huge piece the Council of Aging provides. Commissioner Starley?
Yeah, thank you. This was put together by Kristi Kane, who works with senior programming and, you know, percentages and all, and it's a general letter went out to all the northern counties, not just to us. So, you know, it's kind of a general thing that this percentage is this, and that formula works there, and, but the main gist of the support is that we do support the new formulas. And even though there's a percentage that may be only 42%, but we only get 40%, it's dicey when it comes to applying to all 11 counties in rural Minnesota.
And I'm bringing this up because, well, I certainly want to advocate for our county, our rural services that we need to provide, and it is more expensive to do that in rural Minnesota than it is in other places, maybe. But, I'll just share for a personal story of having a relative who lives in the metro, and it gets pretty upset and likes to tell me, for every dollar, they only get 42% of their services back from state dollars, whereas Cook County gets 58% of the dollar back. And so, this proposed legislation that we are opposing is to bring that closer into a line that for all of Minnesota state taxpayers. And I need a rationale to say over the dinner table, "Well, Cook County deserves more than the metro county where you live." And so, I just want to make sure we're clear where this money is coming from. It's state income tax dollars.
Correct.
And so, I want to make sure we know, we're, instead of currently, we're getting 58%, they're suggesting we get 56%, and I want to know, out of this letter, what are we advocating for?
And I guess what I can do is change the text of that letter to say that we support the services without a percentage. I'm happy to do that.
Okay.
If other people feel comfortable with that.
And Commissioner, you're right, the language about broadband does not apply to us.
Right.
So, if we amend the letter in that last paragraph and talk about the services versus the percentages, you would feel comfortable with that? All right. Is there a motion to approve sending the letter with the prescribed changes? Commissioner?
A motion to approve the letter with the changes.
All right. And is there support?
Support.
Thank you, Commissioner Starley. We have a motion and support. Any further discussion?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I just wanted to also add to this discussion our hopes for being part of the age-friendly community network, and how hopefully that's going to help leverage our efforts along these lines as well. And I just appreciate ARDC's work in the region for getting this, for being engaged with the legislature, because there is so many fronts that we need to be aware of and addressing, so. And this is one of those fronts at the top of my mind. We have been talking housing a good amount, we have been talking childcare a good amount, and it's, I know there have been, there has been talk of our seniors, but I think we need to be more aggressive with supporting them and really building our community and infrastructure with them in mind, so.
I'd agree with that. So, we have a motion, we have support. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Other updates?
Other updates? Well, the big news in my world is, is that we have a new executive administrative assistant who will be serving my office and also this board. Jana Koch-Miller-Burka comes to us from WIP, where she worked for 15 years. Yesterday was her first day, and we're really, really excited to have her onboard. And Jana, I don't know if you'd like to say a few words about yourself?
Microphone's right there.
Will you?
I just want to thank everyone for welcoming me so nicely and beautifully. I came back for my second day.
That's a win.
But, no, everyone has been so welcoming so far. You know, this will be a big change for me, but I'm excited, and as I've told James and other employees here, I really admire the work that you're doing or trying to do. It's not easy work, but I truly believe that you've got our community in mind, and if I can help support that, I would be very happy to do so. So, again, thank you for the wonderful welcome.
We're glad you're here. Thank you. Thank you. So yesterday was her first day. We're kind of working through all the, all the things that are part of her very busy job. Spent much of yesterday meeting staff and starting to talk about all the, all the duties that will be under, under her capable hand. So really glad you're here, Jana. Thank you.
Commissioner Mills?
Thank you, Madam Chair, and thank you, Administrator Yorki. Thank you, Jana. And I don't know how long it'd be appropriate to play this joke out, but if you could just say every time you meet somebody and you are, and just do that for a long time.
So other news, we continue to work on our strategic plan. Commissioners White and Hawkins are sitting on that, on that steering committee. We have begun having meetings with staff to talk about some ideas we've generated around mission and vision and also an analysis of organizational strengths, weaknesses, opportunities and threats. Our first meeting was with the highway department staff a week ago. And I have to say, I, and I think all of us in the room were very pleasantly surprised by how engaged that group was. They were very, very involved in the discussion. They asked a lot of great questions. They had a lot of really great suggestions. And the whole reason we're doing this is because, number one, strategic plan, that's, that's the roadmap for our organization. It's the tool that gets us from where we are to where we want to be. And where we want to be, if I just sit down at a desk and try to define that for myself, it might be one thing, but it might not reflect what the organization really needs. And I really believe that the best way to do this kind of planning is to involve everyone as much as possible. And so going around to the departments, getting feedback from them on, you know, are we, is the steering committee on the right path in terms of its ideas about vision and mission? Are we, are we considering all of our strengths, weaknesses, opportunities and threats? Are there things missing? As it turns out, there are things missing and we learned that in the, in the meeting with the highway staff. So really excited to be having those discussions. We have additional meetings set with other departments and our intent is to talk to everybody before we move on to the next phase of putting the plan together. So I just want to thank the folks who have participated and want to tell other staff who are going to be participating in these meetings, we really, really do want your feedback. It's vitally important because together we're all smarter than any one of us. And so really encourage folks to be thinking about this and to actively participate in discussions. So that's one thing. The other big things, I mentioned the capital improvement plan. We continue to work on a draft of that document that we'll plan to issue around the middle of next month. I don't, I mean, I've been getting some questions from folks. Commissioner White mentioned some of the questions that she's been getting. And I'm going to be drafting an article actually for County Connections to talk about the space needs analysis because there've been some questions about that. And I think there are some misunderstandings and some things that need to be clarified. So that will be appearing in the News Herald here pretty, pretty soon. Those are kind of the, the big things, always lots of little things swirling around. I have found how really infeasible it is to do Jana's job and my job at the same time. It just really does not work. So really glad she's onboard and starting to kind of dig out of some of the things that have been piling up over the last few weeks. So that's all I got.
All right. Thank you. So now we have an opportunity for commissioners to talk a little bit about their meetings. Commissioner Hawkins?
Well, I'd just like to echo what Administrator Yorki said about the highway department. I was just so pleasantly surprised that those guys engaged positively. You could tell when you walked into the room at first, there was, oh, what are we here for? But as the meeting went on, they were leaning forward, they were contributing, and they really improved what the working group had come up with. I just want to say thank you and I want to put a challenge out to the other departments. Step up like the highway department because they impressed me, so just want to say that. And I just want, I didn't really attend a whole lot of committee meetings this last week since, or since our last meeting, but extension yesterday, everybody needs to go look up winter sowing and it's not sowing. It's S-O-W-I-N-G. I never learned, knew about this and everybody needs to go and look that up because that was pretty exciting, that extension yesterday.
All right.
Good things happening there.
Thank you. Commissioner White?
Well, did a number of Zoom meetings with talking heads about emergency communications and, and so that's kind of getting to be a little less foreign, but had an incredibly stressful down at the hub for the Council on Aging. And the, this is a totally volunteer steering committee or Board of Directors, whatever their title is. But they have been engaged in rebuilding the infrastructure and the reputation and there, there is at least one committee person, there are only two paid employees at, down at the hub. It used to be known as the Senior Center. They offer an incredible array of activities and opportunities. They're a place for the clinic to do the, to come in with health services. There's free tax services from people from the community coming in and volunteering to do things here. And there are people on this board that put in more than forty hours a week. It's a working board. I mean, they're really working. So I would like to just, a shout out to those people on this board down at the Council on Aging, that community service, the spotlight can never shine brightly enough on what they are doing to help this organization come back and provide for the community. And county government, which is this organization, is here for the community of the county. And so I just, in this great nation of ours, or world, or however you want to put it, I don't think I'm being facetious, but community is often lacking and for all of our diversity and all of our works. We are a community here and I believe that down at the hub is a shining example of a group of people who without pay are working for the betterment of the community, including people they don't even know. So that was the biggest part of my last, since we met last time.
All right.
Oh, wait, I do have to add though, I also was at the highway department. Blown away, astounding. I mean, first off, I have never seen some of these people before. I mean, they're just like out there in the road someplace. And, and two, they, they did a lot of sharing, which was like, you know, you get a, you get a guy that's on a loader driving a dump truck and suddenly they, it's like, huh, who knew? Who knew? It was really, it was really good. It was really good, so. Now I'm dead.
Thank you. Commissioner Mills?
Well, yeah, as I said, I was at the Community Health Board meeting yesterday, so that's at the front of mind here. Per usual, the big takeaway for me is the medical consultant's presentation, Dr. Kuphal from Duluth. And he talked about substance use and abuse and the impacts opioids are having in our Gave some reports based on county and Cook County is very impressive. We talked largely about overdose deaths and that was kind of the basis of some of that data. And there's some really alarming trends and I think the data went back to like nineteen-seventy-two for the state and for the region and just the dramatic increase in overdose deaths. There's such a strong correlation between overdose deaths and level of education. It's, it's, I don't know if it's fair to say it's a direct correlation, but it's, there's a strong correlation there. And particularly in, in women recently, younger women. And it's, it's terrible addiction and substance use and abuse. And, and we all, we're all familiar with the opioid epidemic. What I am not as familiar with are some of the treatment options. And of course, you know, I learn about it to an extent through, through my work with Public Health Human Services and the CHB and Airhead Health Alliance. But just, there is a stigma, well, clearly there's a stigma about opioids and drug use and abuse, right? And, and the factors that lead to those situations. It's typically because people don't have their needs met and that can be very complicated and historical trauma plays an incredible, incredibly large role in that as well. And I'm talking about psychological needs. I'm talking about, you know, basic needs, just human needs. And so for some of those treatment options, it's, there's treatment, right? There's drugs to block the receptors of opioids. And he talked about three different levels of drugs. One that I am more familiar with just from media and TV shows and movies and whatnot is methadone and how that basically replicates the effects on, in the brain so that when a person gets that treatment, they feel like they've got a fix of the drug. And it essentially is that, but it doesn't have the same harmful effects, but it also can be abused. And so to administer that treatment, there's pretty strict guidelines in programming. And then there's another one that gives you, gives a person who's in treatment that kind of benefit, but then tapers off. So it will not give that same effect. And then there's one, which basically Narcan, where you just, boom, it just blocks all of that and you get all the after effects of it. So it's just interesting to learn about those different tiers of treatments and the effects they have both on the physical body as well as the, as the brain. But what I found most interesting is the efficacy of the treatments. And there are some controversial studies done in the past where they did placebos with this treatment and then that, that study was shot down at being unethical because so many people who got the placebo went back into remission and, or not remission, but they started using again, so they had to stop that. But it did give a pretty good illustration of the efficacy of these treatments. And so this doctor is, he's got no questions about it. He says there's all kinds of stigma around the treatments as well. So part of his work is trying to share the data and, and these treatment options so to reduce that stigma. Worth noting is in Cook County, for such a small population, we had two doctors who are trained on administering these treatments. We're losing one of them. One of those doctors will be moving away, so we'll be down to one. Still, for a community our size, that's a leg up, but they are also reducing the restrictions and the requirements for doctors to give these treatments. So the hope is that the doctors and the medical professionals that we do have will have the opportunity and we, and we won't just be relying on the two that have that background. So bad news and then good news. And yeah, the same isn't true for the other counties as far as the success in reducing overdose, overdose deaths. Lake County is doing pretty good, but both, both St. Louis County and Carlton are struggling more so, so pretty, pretty sad statistics there. Sorry to give such a heavy update. I think that's, that's all I want to add, share with.
It's an important update.
Yeah.
Well, I had an opportunity with Commissioner Storey to attend the AMC Leadership Summit at the end of March. Three days, found it extremely valuable. Helped us to look at defining our own personal goals, looking at big picture goals, you know, what do you want to do in the next couple of years, in the next five years, kind of mapping out, you know, the remainder of your life and backing up and saying, what have I done? What are those critical pieces that I want to do? It was just a fascinating opportunity to think in a different way. And then I was really pleased last week at Soil and Water Conservation District. We now have a complete board. So district, all our districts are represented and we developed a joint powers agreement between SWCD and our highway department so that we're working together for stopping those invasive species. So it's really nice to see that collaboration. And then what was really interesting is we were talking about invasive species, in particular aquatic invasive species. And we're excited that Voyager Brewing has developed a rusty, crazy, hazy beer. There are no crayfish in the beer. I do want to report that. But anyway, they will be releasing that.
Missed opportunity.
Yes. But they will be releasing that and it's just a really nice way that our businesses in our county work with government and different kinds of agencies to collaborate and make Cook County a better place. So really an interesting and unique way. And one of the expenditures we had is we bought or allowed the purchase of some, what I'd call rubber crayfish for educational purposes to show the difference between our native crayfish and the Rusty's. So that was kind of fun. But something that really Amanda Wieberg will be using in a, in a great fashion this summer.
Madam Chair, on that note, I just wanted to share that I had the opportunity to eat some rusty crayfish and it was just like I remember from New Orleans. Delicious, smaller, but, but very tasty.
I suggested a cookbook, series of recipes that, where people could contribute rusty crayfish recipes and then we could sell it, make some money for SWCD. I don't know. But yeah, they're pretty tasty. Commissioner Storey?
Thank you. Well, the leadership conference was hugely attended. We hardly had a chair left for anybody to walk in, for sure. The theme of it was the magic of leadership. And I thought, hmm, okay, well, the presenter is a magician. And so his ambiance was well-received in the beginning and we went along with everything and questions. And he had us do a magic trick, which I thought was really interesting. It really brought the group together, so it was a lot of fun in that respect. Yesterday at extension, just for FYI, starting last year, we honored a farm or a business and we're going to continue that this year, honoring a business or a farm. And the presentation will be done during Fish Picnic. So we look forward to that.
Great. Well, we have recognition of staff. We have Matt Olson, who's been with us for one year, Diana Demetrowa, a year, Dan Bergland, thirteen, Kirk Oberg, sixteen, Kurt Loboda, eighteen, Steve Butts, twenty-eight, and then Dusty Nelms, forty-four years. And Bev Wolke, thank you, Commissioner Mills, eighteen years. I mean, just think about the number of years of service these people have provided. And Dusty is older than a lot of our employees. She's served more years with the county than our employees are old. That's amazing.
Invaluable historical knowledge in these employees.
Absolutely. Really amazing. So really something to celebrate. Jana, we hope- Jana, we hope you are with us that many years as well. For giving you that challenge. All right. With that, we are ready for adjournment, if someone would like.
I just have a couple of things I need to, about leadership. This is the, what do they call it these days? The North Shore Journal, Steve Fernwin did a little thing about leadership, which I think is very elemental, but very, very easy and thought-provoking reading. Two things I failed to mention was, these were not written in writing, but one item that came up repeatedly was about the size of, I mean, what do all these people do here? Why are we so large? But the other one was the YMCA. Why can't our log rollers use that? And then it began a conversation about who owns the building? And this was a question for Brady then, how much does the county give to the YMCA or support the YMCA? And then what, what's the contract look like? I've asked for that a couple of times. And since there's a lot of county money and city money going into the YMCA, do we have, at one point, we had the right to see their books, their legal, their 501(c)(3), and those are the questions that I want answers to, and I want answers to them. And I've asked a couple of times, I'm not on that committee, I don't know where to go with this, but we have, again, our log rollers, I can't think of their name, have, are being denied access to the use of the YMCA pool, even though they are a 501(c)(3) carrying their own liability insurance with their equipment, having their own, they don't, you know, lifeguarding, they pay a fee, have paid a fee to the Duluth YMCA, and why can't they use, why, why are taxpayers not allowed to use a taxpayer-funded building? So I want that answered.
Thank you.
We can talk about that.
No, I want to talk about it in public, because we talk about that. Our number one responsibility is to get this information out to the public and tell them, what is the relationship between the YMCA and the county government? What is it? You know, I mean, I know what it was originally, nicely, hopefully, it would be, and it hasn't, it has evolved into something different. And so that conversation needs to be a public conversation. It's public money. It's a public building. We clean it, we may, we fix it, we do, we subsidize it. So I would really want that to be respectfully a, a public discussion, and we can put it on an agenda, and we
That might be a good committee of the whole discussion.
Which then, the county taxpayers better tune in and listen.
That's recorded.
No, more than that. More, I'm telling you to listen to it. It's recorded, but I want you to listen to it, because your answers will get answered. And if you have, whatever those questions are, there'll be somebody that will be willing to ask them. So anyway, that's, that's all I, I didn't know where to put it in. No one put it in writing.
Okay. Thank you. Any other items before adjournment? Not as their motion to adjourn. So move. Thank you, Commissioner Starly. Is there a second?
Support.
All right. Is there anyone who does not want to end the meeting at this point? I don't think that's the way you're supposed to say it, not the rules, but you know what I mean.
I know, and I really need a drink.
Everybody wants to adjourn? Aye?
Aye.
All right. Thank you.